Ms. Wooten, I appreciate what you said about your husband and how beloved he was. So I think you can understand how we feel about Mr. Memes and CTEC community because he was very beloved to us. Wanted to ask the council to consider deferring this resolution at this time because there's been a lot of misinformation floating around about the resolution. And I would like to clear up some points in regards to the CTEC community and our Civic League Board. First, we did not seek this matter of E. George Memes being recognized by the city of Virginia Beach. We are very capable of recognizing Mr. Memes. We have done so with a scholarship in his name. We also have an award that we present, a Trailblazer Award, at our Image Award event. However, the request did come to me and my Vice President, Elizabeth Mills, via Mr. Andrew Jackson, and this was in June of 2020. And this email was a email that was forwarded from a member of the City Council. And this email was asking for a way to recognize Mr. Memes and what we would like as a community. Okay? Second, regardless of how you all as a body view this issue, how it came about, who was aware, who wasn't, when an email or notice comes to the community, to any person in the community, from a member of the City Council, it is representing to us on faith that is from the council. We don't have any idea what's going on in the back room, what y'all talking about. We're taking it on faith value that this is what the council is sending out to us. That's what we received. Third, please do not take our support of deferring this matter as an indication that this is something we don't want because that is not the case. We do want... The CTEC community is very interested in this resolution moving forward and whatever is the proper process. We want to follow the process. What we ask are two things: that two members of our community participate in the process or the committee that you form, and second, we get to choose two people. We are sick and tired of people second guessing what citizens of CTEC want. We have a monthly meeting. You can come. Mr. Tower's been there. Mr. Moss has been there. Ms. Rouse has been there on a regular basis. You are all welcome to attend. And you can ask us. You could do a survey. If we need a petition, we could do that, too. We're quite capable of doing that. What we want is for you to stop discussing CTEC community civic league business with people who live in CTEC but they don't come back to the community to ask the question that you're asking. They're simply giving you their opinion and they do not represent us. I am the president of the Civic League, but I am not the sole entity. Everything that comes to me goes to our board and to our community leaders. I don't make any decision as an individual for CTEC. Last, I want to follow up on an email that was circulating about Mr. Memes. In particular, this e... Oh, am I out of time?
You are.
Oh, I'm...
Please stand.
I'm lost on, yes.
Please stand.
Okay, I didn't know I thought I lied. About Mr. Memes not supporting the resolution for the Dr. Martin Luther King way. So what I want to say is, Mr. Memes may not have been liked by many of you, but he stood up for the most vulnerable in our community, and that's across the city. You may not have liked his tactics, but he was a bulldog for our community. And he was what we needed when we needed it the most. Okay? His statement on Dr. Martin Luther King's... on the resolution wasn't opposed to the resolution itself. He was opposed to the following line: "Whereas Virginia Beach is an inclusive community that is welcoming and empowers all." That was in 2017. And yet, in 2021, Pharrell Williams has sent an open letter to this City Council for the very same topic. That's what he was saying. He wasn't against it. You may not have liked him as a man, but we will not take kindly to his memory being begrudged. Okay? Finally, that was all I had to say.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Jackson, and then we have one speaker, Webex.
Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Council. I'm almost where she is in that there's too much chatter, 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 chatter. I think if you all are going to vote on something, let the community hear what it is you're discussing. Never mind these little... I talked to him over here and I talked to her over there. Bring it to this chamber. Let us hear that discussion. Then we can weigh what it is you're doing. We can't run around and see who's whispering to who and who met with who and who likes who. I don't want to hear that. I've been here in this city long enough that... That's enough. Okay? That's enough. I'm asking for it to be deferred so that you all can get your stuff together. Sit down together. If you need somebody... She just gave you an invitation. You can invite somebody out of the community. Maybe that'll be enough to kind of pull you all together and make a decision and stop the chatter, chatter, chatter. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
The last speaker is via Webex, Vernon Harris Jr. Mr. Harris, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, your mic is unmuted.
My name is Ernest Harris Jr. I'm on the Board of CTEC Community Civic League. And I'm asking the same thing that Andrews and my president asked for. We need you to defer this resolution so that we can meet the community. So the community can meet and decide what we want. Then we can let you know what we want. We were not properly notified. The community was not properly notified. And Ms. Tammy Rice, she is our president. She is our spokeswoman. Thank you. I'm not going to waste your time. This is exactly what I would appreciate, that the council would defer this to a later date so we can organize and get what the community found exactly what the community wants. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you to all the speakers who spoke tonight. Have a few comments. I just want to make sure that there's clarity here going forward for everyone. First, let me talk about the history of this resolution. In 2019, a resolution was submitted to honor Mr. Memes, and it was approved unanimously by City Council. During this time, several members of City Council agreed that something more meaningful should be done or to honor Mr. Memes in the city of Virginia Beach. Since this time, I've been working with the community to find out how they wanted to honor Mr. Memes. I also reached out to Councilmember Tower, who is the district representative, and Councilmember Rouse, because he has ties with CTEC and grew up in CTEC, to initiate the process and engage them in the process back in 2020, in June 2020, actually. So there's also some talk about a precedent. Can we do this? Are we out of line with following or designating a road in memory of someone? Well, the precedent was already set back in 2017 when the council unanimously approved the designation of Virginia Beach Boulevard for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The city attorney confirmed that this resolution that I was setting forth tonight and the dedication for Mr. Memes is in line with that precedent. So the precedent has been that this resolution follows that precedent. In addition, there's a street that was named for Bishop Barnett Thurlgood in 2010 when the property owners and the planning director executed a change for Erie Avenue to Bishop Thurlgood Avenue, which is another example of a street being dedicated and named for someone who's beloved in the community and the community wanted to honor. And so that's another example. There are countless other streets named in our city for people, for other people. In terms of the process, the process of communicating this resolution was as follows. There was an initial email that was sent to the body on November 7th, and then on Tuesday, November 9th, the resolution was submitted to the body. On November 16th, I discussed the resolution with City Council during a workshop session. And during that discussion, Councilmember Tower mentioned to me that there was a concern by a respected member in the community that this resolution would not be accepted. And we had a brief conversation, I had a brief conversation with him about this particular person and that they voiced the same concerns way back 2020 when this process started. And we talked about how the president of the CTEC League, President Rice, determined then that that person did not represent the majority of the CTEC community and that their suggestions and information regarding issues in the community not accepting this was not founded. And so the next course of action was to call council members to give feedback and clarification, questions regarding the resolution. And I placed calls to council on November 30th. And additionally, I entertained and responded to several emails regarding this matter. Hence, this is a process that I have adhered to regarding the resolution to communicate it to the body. It was mentioned that, you know, there was no notification, no one knew, but this is a process that I always follow. Fast forward to a conversation and a call from Vice Mayor Wilson. I received a call from her last Monday, November 29th, and she stated that council would not support the measure to honor Mr. Memes and that it would fail. Now, I know that Vice Mayor Wilson does not represent the entire city councils and their wishes, so I proceeded to contact them separately and ask questions and get concerns and feedback. What I noticed was a few things. It seemed that the strategy for analyzing this resolution was not to see whether we could do it, but it was more so to decide how not to do it. And that really concerned me. There was additional information about and offered about how the community should honor Mr. Memes. So there were suggestions made or dictated, but it was not a collaborative effort. And so I also noticed a double standard here as it relates to resolutions that honor people, whether it's a building or for their achievements. There's a double standard here. In the past, I've been presented with resolutions from various members of this body to name buildings to honor people and their achievements in the community. Not one time was I engaged in a discussion of how that individual would be honored. We did not discuss the matter. We didn't take time during workshop sessions. The resolution was just permitted for signature and it was pushed through. However, this resolution, I was... Before I presented it to council or in that process, there are all kinds of prerequisites and requirements that I was asked to do, which I don't understand. This should not, and there shouldn't be, a double standard here. Finally, I just want to go over just reasons why we should support this resolution. I would like to place the focus back on the community, the CTEC community and the community leaders who would like to honor Mr. Memes. Again, I want to submit to you that the strategy to approve this resolution should not focus on reasons why it should not be executed, but the strategy should focus on reasons why it should be approved. Here are some reasons, but not limited to this list. And whether you support it or like Mr. Memes or not, his achievements stand on their own. He fought for the disparity study. He addressed the U.S. Congress in 2013, resulting in CTEC being recorded in history. He established the CTEC College Scholarship Program in 2011 with assistance from Bishop Barnett Thurlgood of New Jerusalem Church. He established the first candidate forum held by the African-American community in Virginia Beach. He established the Mr. and Mrs. CTEC Program in 2013. He established the annual CTEC Image Award and College Scholarship Gala. He established the CTEC Living Black History Maker Gala in February 2018. He was the president of the CTEC League from 2010 to 2018. He helped establish the new CTEC Community Recreation Center in 1997. He helped establish the Black Law Students Association at Regent University. He helped establish the Human Rights Commission in 1990s. And he helped establish the Minority Business Council, renamed the CTEC Community Recreation Center. He fought to provide sewage to Mr... or excuse me, to Mount Zion AME Church in the community in the 1990s. And he also defended college students during or following the Greek Fest in 1989. So why was the December Day important? Well, in December, and December 2nd would have been his birthday. Therefore, December today was the most appropriate time that was closest to his birthday. That's why this time was chosen, and that's why those who were focusing on delaying did not understand the significance. However, as you've heard from the community, they would like to delay this matter because of the issues of miscommunication and the confusion. And so it's their wish, and in the interest of the community, I would like to postpone this matter indefinitely until such a time that is acceptable to the community to move forward. Therefore, my motion is to delay this matter indefinitely.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion? Can you open that chair?
Oh, it is open, right?
Both are open. Mr. Tower?
Are we at discussion of the motion?
Yeah.
I would just like to comment one. I want to thank the people, particularly the President Civic League from in here, who I've dealt with extensively on this and other matters, and thank them for their gracious hospitality to me at meetings. And I know others, other members of council always feel welcome and invigorated when we meet with folks in CTEC. This is simply an issue of miscommunication. I don't want to make this into more than I think it is. I think Ms. Wooten's intentions are absolutely right on. She's trying to honor somebody who's well-respected in the community. The difficulty was that, well, at some point, the issue was, okay, we'd like to know how the community would like to honor Mr. Memes. That was the message. I think the problem was in the communication somewhere along the line. I'm not blaming him. I'm just kind of explaining what I saw happening. This is in my district. That's really why I'm taking the lead in trying to find a way to get something positive done out of this and make sure there aren't any further miscommunications. But I think the problem was there... Ms. Wooten, for all her good intentions, was not designated by a resolution of council to go forth and see CTEC's civic leagues or any other group of civic... and tell us what you want. She undertook to do that. In the course of doing that, she didn't make clear that, you know, naming something after... doing something that we had done to honor perhaps the greatest civil rights leader in America's history. Some may think, well, maybe that's not what we want to do for someone else. I don't know how it happened. I wasn't there. All I know is there certainly is some people who are opposed to it for that reason and perhaps others, having to do with their own view of Mr. Memes. But nonetheless, here we find ourselves are today. I don't want people to leave thinking that we can't do better. It's a communication issue, but it's one we can solve. How council, in its wisdom, ultimately decides to deal with it is up to council. And that's why we sit up here. We are the ones that make these decisions. And I think the folks in CTEC know that. I think they respect that. I don't think they're trying to impose their will against the will of council. They're here representing the name and the spirit and the memory of someone that they have a great deal of respect for, and I respect that. But that doesn't achieve results of council getting the votes. We don't have the votes here tonight. I'm hoping with further discussion, we can come up with a way to honor Mr. Memes that will be... feel satisfactory to the community, to Mr. Memes' memory, to those who respect Mr. Memes, and even those who may not share all those views but recognize how he is held in the CTEC community. I'm sorry it's gotten out of hand, and to the extent, as the district rep, if I was too passive about letting that happen, as I said, I don't blame Ms. Wooten. I don't blame anybody other than myself. I'll take some responsibility for it. But let's move on, get work... Find out a proper way to recognize Mr. Memes that we can all... we can agree on, or at least a majority of council can agree on, and move forward with that. And I thank all of the people that have expressed opinions formally, informally. I know there's been some criticism of who talked to who about what. I don't, you know, I don't worry about that. Council people talk to people all the time. I can't stop and think, well, is this somebody I... It's okay with me to talk to? If they want to talk to me, you know, I'll make the decision whether there's somebody I respect their opinion or not. Sometimes I do respect their opinion. Doesn't mean I agree with it, but I'll hear it. I want to hear it. So thanks to all the folks that have had input in this. I hope that we haven't made a mess of this thing because I think Mr. Memes deserves to be honored in a way that everybody recognizes is a suitable way. I realize there may be some disagreement about what that is, but I'm confident if we work at it, we can find a way that satisfies most of the people. You're never going to please everybody all the time. Thanks.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. Before I comment, I think the President of the Civic League, Tammy...
Can I just want to...
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry. I just want to respond. I appreciate all that you said, Councilman Tower, but it's very important to us that we share how we want Mr. Memes to be honored. We're not looking for the council to tell us how to honor him. I know that it has been batted around about changing a name of something that was CTEC. And I can tell you that Mr. Memes was adamant that everything in our community that says CTEC remains that way. So that is not something he would want. He would not want CTEC Park to be renamed after him or CTEC Elementary School or the Rec Center. Anything that's in our community that has the name CTEC, we want it to remain that way because we have a history with this city of CTEC's name being taken from us. Bird Neck Road was CTEC Road. It's not anymore. The old Coast Guard Station was CTEC Coast Guard Station before it was the Virginia Beach Coast Guard Station. So it's very important to us in how we choose to honor him. So I just wanted to make that clear. And that was the reason why we were asking for two members of our community to be part of the process when you go into discussing how you want to do it.
That's very good feedback. Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you. I just was going to comment as a member who... of this body who grew up in CTEC. As well, I don't speak for CTEC. That's for Ms. President Tammy Rice to do. So if there's ever a resolution or any communication that would involve CTEC, as an at-large member who represents the entire city, first would talk to the president as well as the district representative. And I think that's extremely important, being that we are going to go to a 10-district system pretty soon. So it's going to be very important that we work with district reps to bring them into the fore about things we want to get done within their community. That being said, I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank Ms. Wooten for bringing this issue to light so we can get better understanding of what's going on. And Councilman Tower as well. I know historically, in the past, CTEC hasn't always had a representative who has continuously and consistently come to the Civic League meetings. And that's something that you have done on a continuous basis. So I want to thank you for that, as well as the other at-large member here, Councilman Moss, who attend these Civic League meetings throughout the city. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I, in substance, agree with the sentiments that Mr. Tower has expressed here this evening. And I want to make sure that we're sensitive to the whole issue. And I don't want, frankly, I don't want to risk this thing, this resolution being turned down because that would be a negative, that would be expressed towards Mr. Memes, and I don't want that to happen. I personally have had many conversations with Mr. Memes when he was living, and some of them we didn't... We agreed on, some of them we didn't. But he was always a gentleman to me, nonetheless. And so that there... We won't be put into a position of turning down a resolution honoring him or risking that happening in hopes that we might find some other way to show respect and honor for the gentleman. I would like to make a motion to remove this item from the agenda so that we don't vote on it.
Is this a substitute motion?
And give the Civic League an opportunity to come forward and give us some ideas of what they might have in mind for showing respect and recognition for a gentleman who was very active in his community, very active, came here many times to express support for his community. And so I'm going to make a motion to remove the item from the agenda because I don't want to risk it being voted down. And on the other hand, I personally don't think what has been proposed is the best way to honor this gentleman. So that's my motion.
Point of classification? I just need a point of classification. What's the motion on the floor?
It's a substitute.
The motion is to remove this item from the agenda.
This has to be a substitute motion.
Right, but what was the previous motion on the floor?
Motion was to defer.
To defer indefinitely until such as an appropriate time to the community can decide what they want to do. I'd like to respond to a couple of things, if I may.
Is there a second to that? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Was there a second to my motion?
No. Is there a second to her motion? I'm sorry. I'm not a turn.
I just want to say a couple of things. In terms of... Just want to be clear the way this came up. This designation of Bird Neck Road for Mr. Memes was vetted through communicating with the CTEC president, who went to the community and others and talked to them to find out what they wanted to do. There were several options. They came back, and I sent you... I sent the body an email. You have the email from the president that states what the community and the Civic League want. They voted on it. That's what they want. We're not at the point where they're trying to figure it out. We're not at the point where they're trying to figure it out. That's not where we are. The, they're at the point, they know what they want. They don't want to be dictated to what it is we want to do for Mr. Memes. That's not how you honor someone. You bring the community in, you talk to them, you ask them what they want. My communication to the body was a series of communication and reaching out to the president, the community, and then in response, they said, this is what we want, the designation of Bird Neck Road, through which went through the city attorney to see if this was something that can be done and getting approval of the process. Hence, the information regarding the president and so forth. Now, in terms of comments being made that I inserted myself into doing this, no, n- not at all. There's so many things on, in this community, so many areas to address and focus on. I don't have to do that. But what I did do was take the lead on an issue that was agreed upon by council to do something further to honor Mr. Memes. And I reached out to both council members, Tower, Rouse, to engage them, to see how they wanted to move forward. And so that's how it started. I didn't insert myself into anything. I just did the research, worked with the community, and then brought the information back to council. That's what I did. So I just want to be clear that that's not miscommunicated and misconstrued because that's not true. I didn't insert myself into anything. Just took the lead and did the work.
So Mr. Jones has offered a substitute motion. Is there anyone who would like to second it? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to defer this indefinitely. Is the voting board open? Yes, yes, ma'am. By a vote of 10 to zero, this resolution has been deferred indefinitely. Thank you, Madam Plurk. Thank you.